Okay, it is six thirty and we'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order. First item of business is the adoption of the agenda moved by Council, maybe seconded by Council Jameson that the agenda be adopted as circulated. Any questions or comments on the agenda for this evening? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's carried. Next item on the agenda is declaration of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof. Does anybody have an interest to declare? Go ahead, Council Lackey.
Uh, through you worship, uh, six point four planning report S R dash one six zero dash two three short term rentals.
Okay, that's noted and so the clerk will get your form from you. Does anybody else have a declaration to make? Council Fody.
Thank you. You're worshiping through you the same, uh, six point four on the planning report.
Any other declarations? Seeing none, we'll move forward with number four in camera. Moved by Council, maybe seconded by Council Fody that council adjourned to go in camera in order to discuss an item that relates to in camera minutes August twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality property matters and advice that is subject to solicitor kind of client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose litigation matters. So motion is on the floor. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it's carried. So we'll adjourn to the in camera room. And our guests can keep themselves.
Thank you.
So we certainly learned some lessons there and we'll be making sure that our facility is as future proof as it possibly can be. Next slide please. We did a recent market study to make sure that the demand was going to be there through the build period and well into the future. Not surprisingly, that market study showed that we definitely do need more capacity in the region. Next slide please. So here is sort of a preview. These are the early
Thank everybody for their patience for our in camera meeting. We'll reconvene at seven thirteen P M. And we will begin with delegations and presentations. Oh, oh, sorry, my motion from the in camera. Moved by Council Jameson, second by Council, Deputy Mayor Fodey. The council rise and report from in camera and that the mayor report following out comes from in camera. The in camera minutes of August twenty fourth, twenty twenty three were adopted as circulated. And we provided direction to staff on litigation and property matters. So all those in favor of the motion at hand? All those opposed? Let's carry. Okay, now we'll move forward with delegations and presentations. Five point one, Brandt Borough from Sherwood Park Manor's Legacy of Care, the next fifty years capital fundraising campaign. So Brandt is a colleague of mine from Elizabeth Town Kitley, mayor there. And he sits on their fundraising board. Could be on for you there, Brad.
There we go. Okay, we should be all set. All right. So first of all, thank you very much, your worship and council members for having me this evening. As Mayor Smith Gack, he mentioned, I am mayor of Elizabeth Town Kitley. That's not why I'm here today. I'm here wearing a different hat as a member of the Board of Sherwood Park Manor. So if you have any questions, feel free to address me however you wish. Even hey you is fine, as long as it said with love. So what I'll do is I'll ask you to advance to, I think it's slide six or seven. I'm going to assume that everybody has read their package and so that you'll know most of this. So next, the perfect. Okay, so so I will let you know that Sherwood Park Manor, as it exists today, has been around for nearly fifty years. It's a hundred and seven bed facility that was started by the then two hospitals in the in the area, Brockville General and Saint Vincent de Paul. It did receive broad community support at the time. And although it's difficult to think in these terms, because so much time has passed. At the time, it was very progressive and very avant garde in terms of its design. The wide halls, the accessibility aspects and so on. Those were very forward looking things of the time and and quite futuristic. Of course, those are things that we all take for granted. The the thing that's important to understand about Sherwood Park Manor is it has never been a municipal facility. It's never received municipal subsidy. From time to time over the years, the facility has had to go sort of hat in hand to local municipalities for capital maintenance issues, critical maintenance issues. We had a leaky roof roof one year and Brockville and Elizabeth Town Kitley stepped up and helped to fund that. So so if you are under the impression that the facility has been on shaky ground, that is true. It is a part of its past, but that is well in our rear view mirror now. Starting in twenty nineteen, there were some changes made to the way that the facility was operated. An external consultant was brought in to help the the then board, and this was just prior to my time joining the board, to help that board understand what it was doing, quote unquote, wrong and what it needed to do differently. And so the the facility now for the last five years has operated based on the four funding envelopes that the province provides. And all of the operations are aligned to that. So with the right chair in in the position on the board being an accountant and an auditor and a and a financial guru that we managed to hire on staff. Those are the two key things along with the consultation that really have turned the operation around. So I'm quite proud to report that for the last three years, Sherwood Park has operated in the black to a modest extent. And in those three years has paid off an accumulated six hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit. And our projections into the future continue to show self sufficiency based on provincial funding alone. So that's a really important point to make as we go through the rest of the presentation here. Next slide, please. We hear all the time that the people's lives change when they move into our facility. And I'm certainly not trying to pit our facility against any of the others in the region. I think in this region, we're very fortunate to benefit from excellent care almost anywhere. Not necessarily true of all the the private cares, although we do have a couple of private care facilities in the in the broad region that also enjoy a very good and well earned reputation. And the the facility does employ currently one hundred and thirty skilled workers. And that will scale up appropriately as we undertake the redevelopment. We can move to the next slide, please. The level of care that Sherwood Park has has provided has always been the number one priority. That's part of the reason that previous boards have sort of gone into the red was no matter what it takes, we always make sure that the residents were first. Now fortunately, we can do that with the budget that we're given by the the province. So even the changes that we made did not lower the level of care or the level of satisfaction that we get from the families and from the residents themselves. So having turned ourselves around, we applied to the province for redevelopment because the seventy five of the hundred and seven beds are coming to the end of their life. In fact, they've come to the end of their life in terms of the of the standards. We must redevelop or simply close those seventy five beds. That in reality means closing the facility because we can't survive on just thirty two beds. So next slide, please. Of course, we're going to meet and exceed all of the the current code requirements and the and the standards for long term care homes. Having come through the pandemic, you know, we enjoyed the same type of track record in in terms of no, no deaths as a result of of covid. Well over three hundred and sixty five days without an incidence of covid during the pandemic. So we certainly learned some lessons there and will be making sure that our facility is as future proof as it possibly can be. Next slide, please. We did a recent market study to make sure that the that the demand was going to be there through the build period and and well into the future. Not surprisingly, that market study showed that we definitely do need more capacity in the region. Next slide, please. So here is is sort of a preview. These are the early artistic renderings of the facility. These will become refined as we get a little bit deeper into the into the build. So inset there you see a picture of a future resident or a current resident in an en suite. Next slide, please. And here we are, you know, fairly bare room, basically furnished at this point, but no personal items brought in. And again, as the as we get closer and closer to having the shovel in the ground, these renderings will become more refined. Next slide, please. So the overall project, and I will say that these numbers are slightly out of date only because we got numbers over the last couple of weeks. Again, as we move from phase to phase, the numbers, the drawings, everything becomes more and more refined. So the top number is up to a little over forty four million, almost forty five, I guess. I'm I'm happy to say that that the the rest of the numbers adjust accordingly so that our community support is still just around that five million. And I'll explain that in a little bit more detail in a second. But the breakdown is that we have to go to private market to get a mortgage to support the build. That will be underwritten by the province over a period of time. We have some additional provincial funding that we went after when they announced the fast track funding stream. And so we had a number of milestones that we had to hit certain dates. And I'm happy to say that that we did hit every one of those dates. Regardless of the fact that the province never hit any one of their dates, you know, replying to us, and I'm sure that comes as no surprise. But but not to dwell too much on that. The implication is, for instance, we submitted initial drawings by the first milestone date. And we were to have comments back from the province and then make a refined submission, and that had a certain date associated with it. Well, the board made the decision that regardless of the quality of information that we're able to provide at any given time, we will meet that deadline. And and if we have to resubmit after the fact, so be it. And that's exactly what happened. So we made our second submission devoid of any feedback from the province. Two weeks later, we got the feedback we had been expecting and and didn't arrive. And we spent a few more thousand dollars on revising based on those comments and so on. So I'm happy to say we we met every single deadline that was put in front of us. And any day now, we are expecting ink on paper to make everything completely official to say, yes, you know, here's the green light. Get your shovel in the ground. So on to the next slide, please. Again, wanting to make sure that we were on solid ground, we did a campaign feasibility study by engaging a consultant. And this is not something that I've seen done before. I was unfamiliar with this process. Our consultants did not go out and ask for money on our behalf. What they did was they studied the community response to an ask. And so from that, they they were able to tell us what people's impression of us was in the community. And you can see that ninety percent of those interviewed said that we were good or excellent, which was really kind of heartwarming for us. Two thirds of the interviewees believed that the community at large would respond positively. And of note, it's not the third thought that anybody would respond negatively, a third just didn't know. So really, nobody said, oh, you're going to get a bad response from from this. A third of the businesses roughly said that they would contribute, and over half the individuals said that they would contribute when the time came for the ask. So it seemed like we were standing on a pretty good foundation. Next slide, please. Yeah, that sales and marketing stuff. We'll move on to the next slide. Not that it's not important, but you've seen it before. And again, you can read the the quotes, but that's just to reinforce the the sort of satisfaction that the families and the residents have with the level of service that they they receive at our facility. So you can advance a couple of slides past those. Next, okay, here we go. Now we're starting to get to the nitty gritty. The the fundraising consultants, as a result of that market study, they have a formula that they run all these responses through and the demographics of the region and all kinds of smoke and mirrors that that they that they employ. And and out of that Rube Goldberg financial machine came this number of, you can expect a realistic community target at large of three point five million. Well, our budget was that we needed five to make the whole thing work. And so they said, so you need to go to the municipal sector in total for one point five million, and then all of the math will work. And so that's really why I'm here today. I'm appealing to you to do your part as part of that one point five million in funding that that we need. And the way that we've gone about this is we've already approached the United Counties based on roughly a two dollars per capita ask at the upper tier. And then at the lower tier, we're asking for approximately one dollar per capita over five years. But we also factored in some some other ability to pay mechanisms in there as well. So we took a look at, based on the best information that we have from from your recent budgets, no more than point one five percent of the levy and no more than than point double oh four percent of total assessment. And then, you know, whatever crazy number that worked out to, we rounded it off to to something nice. So with that, I think the next slide is the big one. And so from Leeds and Thousand Islands, we would likely to consider contributing fifty thousand dollars towards our capital campaign. And we know that there are sort of two schools of thoughts, two schools of thought typically amongst councils. One is the councils don't like to commit beyond their current term. And so if that's the case, it works out to just a little under seventeen thousand dollars a year. If you're comfortable with the five year time period, then that's a nice even ten thousand dollars per year. And so that brings me to the end and happy to entertain any questions that that you may have. Oh, there is one thing that that isn't in the in the slides. To put this into perspective, I'm sure you all know that Mapleview is going through a huge expansion and redevelopment right now. And and there are tens of millions of dollars going into into that. They're also fundraising. Their fundraising is for quality of life add ons and so on. Ours is for bricks and mortar. So if we don't raise all the money that we need, we're a few bricks short of a load and that wall won't stand and the building just won't happen. But more importantly, to understand what what failure of our campaign really means. Mapleview is expanding by one hundred and thirty two beds, which is going to add capacity to the region. If we somehow fail in our efforts to raise the money, that's the only reason that this build now would fail. Then our hundred and seven residents are going to have to go somewhere. So that hundred and thirty two bed expansion for those tens of millions of dollars is going to get largely consumed by a hundred and seven people that need a place to go. And so that eighty million dollar project is going to net twenty five beds in the end. So it's so important that both projects succeed. I just wanted to to put that into broad perspective. So happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, go ahead, Counsel Grab.
Thank you. And through you, your worship, thank you, Mayor Borough for that presentation. I remember the fundraising for the Brockville General Hospital and spread out amongst municipalities. Are you approaching, how many municipalities would be involved in this? How far are you reaching out?
So we are approaching everybody who is within the the border of the riding or associated with the counties in any way. So all thirteen lower tiers and the county as as an upper tier. So everybody with a with a share in the game.
Counsel Lucky.
Thank you, worship. And through you to probably our C A O. The ask is, is that something that will come at at budget time? Or is are we looking for a mover and a seconder to receive this as an ask?
Because this is a delegation, this is information, there would need to be a notice of motion to come forward after the presentation, or we could have further discussion to have the item come back and be debated at budget time, which is scheduled for December fourteenth. So we can skin the cat, so to speak, one of two ways. So Counsel Fodey and then Counsel Maybe.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Mayor Burrows, what are you looking out for a timeline? So i- in terms of an answer back regarding the the funding or?
And the shovel in the ground.
Okay, so so the the shovel in the ground, probably end of November to to start the actual project. And completion, I believe, occupancy in October of twenty twenty five. And so that was that was that accelerated and very compressed goal was never on our radar until the province dangled that additional funding. So if we, you know, for anybody who was already on this path and they were in a position to say, yes, we can meet those type time timelines. The province was willing to step up with additional money to compensate for, you know, the crazy pricing that that everybody is experiencing. And that really made the difference between us being able to even contemplate this project or not. That's why we got on that ride. Originally, we would have been getting the shovel in the ground in twenty twenty five rather than, you know, unlocking the the front door in in that time.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, follow up. So you're not looking for the money in any set time. You're just looking for the commitment.
Yeah, that's that's right. And so we have actually just recently checked with the with the bank and they are willing to treat a a commitment from a council so long as there's a resolution, even if it's over a number of years. The commitment by resolution is as good as cash in the bank. We have to reach a certain threshold. I'm not sure that our our board would like me to disclose that specific number, but by the end of February, we need to have a certain cash in the bank or equivalent in order to get that financing unlocked through the mortgage and and continue the the process. So hopefully by end of February, if we could have a commitment of some number, that would be nice.
So our budget timeline does meet your guidelines?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Maybe, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through to Mayor Vettles, Bearlles, sorry. How many residents from?
Times.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
That's okay.
Yeah. Over the barrel, you could say. How many residents of T L T I are either residing in the residence now or have been through the residence in the past?
I can't tell you right off the tip of my of my tongue. I can certainly get back to you with that information. One of the reasons that I don't come to these presentations armed with that specific number is because if we had control over which residents we accepted, it might be a more relevant question. But but the province really controls that based on acuity of condition and and all sorts of things. So I can certainly get you that information. But it's just, it's not not something that's necessarily relevant once you understand the way the whole system operates.
And just as a follow up to a secondary question, the provincial funding that you had alluded to has has increased over the years, obviously, to make it more in the black, as you put it. Do you see any issue with the province in the future in that same regard?
I don't think so. And and I just want to make sure that that I'm I'm clear on on what happened there. Yes, the provincial funding has has increased. So for instance, as the province has set us all on a path to achieve the the four hours of care target and that type of thing, they've stepped up with money, you know, to to help fund that additional care. But but the an increase in provincial funding is not the reason that we are now operating in the black. It's not that just suddenly the problem stepped up and and now they're paying, you know, at a rate that they always should have. It's that there was this popular misconception that 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 the province was never paying enough. And that was an attitude on a number of previous boards. And through the external consultation, and as I say, a a board chair who has an incredible mind for for numbers, being an auditor. We began to understand, no, it can be done on just the provincial funding. You know, it's it's fair. It's not extravagant, but it's fair and you can deliver quality care. So I I don't see that being a big problem in the in the future, certainly not for for the capital side of things.
Excellent. Thank you.
The operational side may or may not be a challenge, you know, five years from now. We'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but everybody's going to be thundering across that bridge if that happens.
At least you can always see the water.
Yes, thanks.
Any other comments or questions for the presenter? I see none, and I don't see any hands up online. So we will move forward. Thank you very much, Mayor Borough.
And shall I leave the camera on for the?
You shall for the next presenter.
Okay.
And we'll thank you very much and we will, our people will be in touch. And we'll move forward to five point two, Mayor Beddoes and Counselor Brown and Harper from Town again in Oakway in regards to Lou Jeffries Arena.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Mayor. I have I have hard copies for everyone if you'd like me to leave it.
If you'd like to distribute them, they'll pass them down.
We're not going to split on the cost of the ink.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councillors and members of the staff of the township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands. First, thank you for receiving us this evening and providing this opportunity to make delegation to you. It's my first opportunity to speak to you as a council, as the mayor of Ganon Oakway, and I want to say it's my privilege and honor to be here today. The relationship, as Mayor Smith Gack, he often says, T L T A sort of hugs Ganon Oakway. And our municipalities, though divided by municipal boundary, have a great deal more in common than they do indifference. And I'll go forward from there. So the issue on which we're delegating this evening, if I may go forward, Madam Mayor.
Yep.
Is on the issue of our joint agreement regarding the Lou Jeffries Recreation Centre. And I will be sharing the briefing with Councillors Brown and Harper. So we have a history of partnership. The facility opened in nineteen seventy three with a seating capacity of eight hundred. It's been in operation for thirty four years. The original agreement between Ganon Oakway and the front of Leeds and Lansdowne, pre amalgamation, was for a package of services on shared costs that was more than just Lou Jeffries. There's a lot more involved in it. And we can provide copies of that document too, and we will do so electronically following this exchange. But over the years, it has come back to involve specifically the Lou Jeffries facility and access to the arena. So we have records dating back to nineteen eighty nine, and we have a longstanding relationship there. Next slide, please. Thank you. Effective in twenty twenty two, when we talk about registered users, those are the people who are involved in programming where they're registered with a league or an activity. So we're talking about amateur hockey. We're talking about ice skating. We're not talking about free skating. We're not discussing, for example, members of organizations like Probus that regularly use the facility and where a large percentage of their population comes out of T L T I. Speaking in advance of the next page, as of twenty twenty two, Ganon Oakway had one percent more users than T L T I. We had two hundred and sixty four and T L T I had two hundred and fifty one registered users. And other, which largely from the Kingston area, so former Pittsburgh Township, was a hundred and fifty four. If we go to the next slide, we can see the breakout on user statistics by by group. And I wanted to make the point that our numbers were correctly formulated this afternoon, but I didn't have time to adjust this. That the the Royals amateur hockey organization had more participants in twenty twenty two than are represented on this briefing. So that errors on me and not on them. But they're a wonderful group of people and dedicated volunteers who provide excellent programming for winter sports, which otherwise frankly wouldn't exist without the dedication of the coaches and volunteers who run it. And as you can see, participation from T L T I is spread across all of the nature of the activities for the registered activities at the at the at the arena. Can we go to the next slide, please? The usage statistics don't include the family members who participate, either observers or who assist. It doesn't include unregistered users, as I mentioned, so all the other activities which use the facility. Nor does it include organizations which may rent the facility, the quilting show that was there this summer, or for example, the sportsman's show, which occasionally goes there as well. For the next slide, I'll turn it over to Counsel Brown.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you to Madam Mayor and fellow councillors providing us the opportunity to speak tonight. So as you see in the slide, whose arena is it really? We have an equal number of users. Both names are on the building. It's located in the town on municipal services. Ganon Oakway would be very happy to discuss signing over this asset with T L T I to operate and manage. Next slide, please. So a true partner gets equal billing. T L T I is cited as a partner, municipal partner on all signage, old and new. Non contributing users of Ganon Oakway and T L T I will pay a higher fee to use this arena. And I think from watching previous committee of the whole meetings, I believe there was some miscommunication. And it is important to note that out of town users do pay a higher fee, and that is will be going forward. So next slide, please. So as you can see, for the twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four ice rental rates, you can see that non contributing members for prime hours for adult pay fifty dollars more and for youth, it's sixty dollars more. As you can see on the graph up there, non contributing members do pay more money. So this year, our council voted to increase the ice rental rates at the Lou Jeffries Arena. And when doing so, I did a little bit of research just to look around in neighboring communities and municipalities and see where their ice rates were at. So as we sit right now, So as we sit right now, Ganon Oakway is fifty to seventy-five dollars cheaper per hour than Kingston. We are a little bit more expensive than the youth arena in Brockville. However, we are cheaper than the Memorial Center in Brockville. So when we were deciding on a price, it obviously had to be adequate with our neighboring municipalities. We don't want to have it be too much, but I found that when voting on it. It was sitting right kind of in the buffer zone where I was comfortable voting for that. You know, you look at the Lou Jeffries Arena. And you compare it to the youth arena in Brockville and the Memorial Center, you know, you obviously have the Memorial Center with great grandstands, nice big arena. The youth arena, I played there back in the day, and it's it's rather tight. Where we are lucky with the Lou Jeffries Arena, it's a it's a very great um arena, and I know playing hockey. Um, I played minor hockey in Ganon Oakway, growing up all the way through to junior B. And just traveling municipalities and different arenas in the area, uh we are very lucky to have that, and it is a great asset. So, next slide, please. So what do we manage under the current services agreement? All ice rentals and advertising, contracts, booking, capital repairs, maintenance, staffing, union negotiations, payroll, insurance, utilities, accessibility upgrades. H S T remittance, grant writing, asset management, et cetera, just to name a few. As I'm sure you you're all aware, are well aware. That uh that arena is like a business, and there's so many moving parts and moving pieces. It's um, it's a a lot going on there. So. I had heard from uh also watching your committee, the whole meeting, that there was um. Some issues with rec programming regarding your municipality and essentially with. When you guys or when council leads in the Thousand Islands uh writes the check to remit to the town again in Oakway. Um, doing that helps provide rec programming within your community, but not in your community. So that's one note to keep going forward. Uh, next slide, please.
So why do municipalities do it? Recreation is not a revenue generator. It's a value proposition, and what it is 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 providing access to services and opportunities for residents using their tax dollars to do it. And it really does boil down to the cost benefit analysis, which I think is the root of the discussion here at the table. Um, how do we, and 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 we all have the same goal, which is how do we deliver the most benefit for our constituents uh possible? Uh, for the least amount of dollars. And I think we all. Share that as a fundamental premise of the way that we approach doing the business. In this case, um we believe profoundly that the joint services uh arrangement we currently have delivers uh measurable and significant benefits to both parties. But frankly, if arenas are profit generators, private initiative be lining up to buy them. And the reality is that they only get built with tax dollars. Um, and they tend to be amortized over an extremely long length of time. And next slide, please. Um, one of the discussions about uh hockey or ice sports is about the quality of ice sports. The reality is that kids who are going to be recruited for. Rep teams or double A are going to be headhunted and recruited no matter what. But one of the reasons that we deliver municipal recreation is to provide the opportunity for people who play for the love of the game. And this is about the value proposition to help to create um the facility and the environment which ties people together in a sense of community. Um, and I believe that the shared agreement we currently have enhances those uh the linkages that exist between Ganon Oakway and T L T I in the most positive kind of way. Canadians attitudes about parks and recreation are supportive. Um, the science suggests strongly that exposure familiarity does create those lifetime, those lifelong habits. Uh, and a love for sports and a love of participation. Teamwork and making those sports available um is is one of those public services, like I said, that delivers value. Um, next slide, please.
So how do we keep T L T I at the table? Um, I think, and. We need to have a conversation. Um, the last thing that I would like to see and the last thing that our residents in Ganon Oakway would like to see is this agreement be thrown away. And then um, we try and come up with the funding to to run the the arena in another direction, which is very unfeasible. Um, as you can see on the graphs stated, um next slide, please. So. Yes, remaining users, we we simply can't afford it. Um, as you can see, as the pie graph shows, you know, you have thirty-nine percent from Ganon Oakway, thirty-eight percent from T L T I and twenty-three percent. From um, outsideing or outside municipalities. Um, just looking at that number as a whole, uh as you can see, you know, it doesn't break down the demographics and the breakdown of each team. Um, chatting with another fellow councillor, member of mine, councillor. Uh, his son plays on the U fifteen House League team in Ganon Oakway. And on that U fifteen House League team, there is sixteen kids on the team, thirteen of which are from T L T I. The remaining kids are from Ganon Oakway. So it's um no question that. It's this agreement is important for us, and it's important for our for both communities going forward. So I will leave it at that.
Thank you very much. So um, looking forward. With this delegation from our perspective, um setting the stage for ongoing discussions. For our minds, this isn't a one and done. This is about how do we continue discussing in order to maintain a relationship which I do, which I strongly believe delivers value for. All of our constituents on both sides. And um, we really have three, three proposals putting on the table, which is the service agreement status quo. Uh, which to my mind would be about setting conditions for strategic discussions. Because um rather than thinking tactically about this on a year after year after year basis, we need to frame how we go forward strategically in order to deliver value for both of our constituents. With a plan for joint recreation service delivery. Um, in reality, what has happened here in some ways is the the T L T I has outsourced its rec service delivery for ice time to Ganon Oakway. Because as councillor Brown said, we we manage the delivery of the service, and you've outsourced it to us through the joint agreement. Um, and and so the question then becomes the value proposition. Um, we're certainly happy to discuss the issue of shared ownership of the facility. Um, accepting and having heard some of the discussion and you're asking me the whole meeting about the the nature of the structure. Um, we uh, the actual physical asset management plan is one of the last stages for this kind of structure, one of the last stages in the mandated process from the province. That being said, we have a detailed assessment of the building. Um, and we know what kind of maintenance we're going to be doing going forward. Third, um, we're proposing as another option, uh board of management structure. Which essentially would have the facility managed from both sides with councils having a final decision on how we would go forward. Um, those are three options that we've put forward. Um, but it's not an exclusive list. Um, what what we are here to do is to discuss a way forward. I i in my mind, I mean, I'd like to uh turn the turn the microphone over to councillor Harper to speak. If I may.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, they must, they brought me in as a closer, so I'm hoping to not disappoint. Mayor, members of council, I'm too close. Um, as as a lot of things have already been said, I I believe we're here tonight to. To uh plead for support, to educate on the status quo and uh keep an open-minded partnership discussion on the table. After a lengthy, lengthy review of the uh staff report put together by your C A O. I ask that you please consider supporting option one A. The for this, to me, is not a lifetime commitment. Ganon Oakway will continue to absorb all the risk of ownership. But under this model, T L T I sits at the management table. And uh, is able to take a deep dive, the necessary deep dive in the operations and long-term decision-making. And uh planning. I suggest that after a period of time. If T L T I council and staff don't see this value in this partnership, then another option may be considered. Let's not give up on on recreation between Ganon Oakway and T L T I just yet. Over my last term of council, our two councils participated in a joint recreation master plan. I believe this should be the blueprint that we use to carry on these discussions. If you haven't reviewed this document, I urge you to to go through it again. In several sections, it speaks to the importance of having the Lou Jeffries Arena in this area and its split use. This discussion affects as many, if not more, T L T I users than the Ganon Oakway. Um, most hockey teams are made up of more of hockey players than um, more out of town hockey players than in town, as we we went over that already. Um, this is not a just about ice pads, though. This is a, there's a upstairs hall. Um, I see some members of Probus here tonight. This is just one club that that utilizes that space. Um, to me, this, it's our recreation, our community center. Um, meaning not just Gan or Lansdowne, but this whole area. Um, I I can't be the only one that that sees this area as one large community. I went to elementary school in Ganon Oakway, but all the best uh youth dances were out here in Lansdowne. I don't know why, it was more fun out here. Um. We we need to work together. I I I urge us to to continue to work together to to uh protect. What we have and to maintain and protect the things that we use together. Um, the bottom line is without T L T I in some form of partnership with the town again in Oakway. This facility will become unaffordable for users and will likely eventually close its doors. I'm not sure anyone here really wants to see uh that come to fruition. On behalf of uh my mayor, uh councillors. Um, people of Ganon Oakway, people of T L T I, I thank you for your time and consideration. Um, and and uh I hope that we can continue to work together in in a efficient way to manage this facility. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Harper, councillor Brown, Mayor Betos. I'll go to council for questions at this point regarding the delegation. Go ahead, councillor Foley, or deputy mayor Fordy, my apologies.
That's okay. Thank you, your worship. Uh, gentlemen, thanks for your presentation here tonight. Uh, made for an interesting read the past couple of days. Um, the question I have, and I didn't see it posted anywhere, have you done a uh assessment, like your town done a?
Building condition?
Building, building condition assessment.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Fordy, if I may, Madam Chair, for you. Um, we have, uh, and I don't have that document with me. We uh. Um, I'm going to say that I had a precipitous departure from our own council meeting tonight where we had to approve a subdivision for a hundred and five homes. So I actually left that piece of paper on my desk. My apologies to you, but I will be happy to share an electronic copy with you uh tomorrow during the business day. In fact, I will send it to all of you, or I'll send it through the clerk to all of you. So you can have an understanding of what that looks like.
Thank you. Um, quite frankly, I'm glad you didn't bring it with me. We'd be here until midnight. Um, a B C A is a pretty complimented or uh. Um, concise document that that breaks down what we would be looking to see and and councillor Harper, I agree with you. If we're going to go this route, one A is likely the better choice. And we've done an asset management plan, thanks to our staff here in the township. And it's really set a template for budget management the last two years. It's, I wouldn't use the word it made it easy, but it made it a lot easier. And I think if we're going to move forward as as joint councils on a, on an effort such as a, an arena and uh Ganon Oakway. Then we need to know where we stand. We all need to know that. I mean. We sat around here as the majority of council at this table and and went through this very discussion on some historical buildings in this township that were. Thanks for the grace of God, the strong wind didn't take them down before we managed to build them back up. But it's no different here. What year was this building uh built? Do you remember?
Nineteen seventy-three, uh Deputy Mayor Fordy, uh through you, Madam Chair, and and if I may as well, um we've just actually hired a young man to actually be a dedicated asset management plan developer. So we have a permanent, uh, sorry, a full-time term staff member whose job will be to cr- crunch the A M P. And part of his portfolio, of course, would be to manage the process for this facility.
Thank you. And if I may, I'll wrap up by saying I too have spent. Many, many years, obviously physically looking at me, it's not recent, having played hockey in Ganon Oakway. Now I have the pleasure of watching grandchildren play there, and I'm likely there more often than some of their parents because uh we're a convenient taxi, which I don't mind. I'll uh let some others speak here, please.
Further comments? Uh, councillor, maybe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you to uh Mayor Betos, fellow councillors. I remember the old rink, the one that was attached to the. Uh, curling rink. Councillor, uh, Lackey, you probably remember that one also. It goes back in our memory banks, I will say. But. During our nineteen sixty-seven fundraising for this particular building and rink. Uh, we were looking forward to that new building being built. And with it being a Butler building, as I have stated before, it's a long-lasting structure. There have been many improvements made to this. And yes, it may be aged, but. I look after some buildings that are a hundred and fifty years old. And they're being refurbished, they're being reused. So it's attainable, it's not that big a deal. It does cost money, yes. We can't afford to have our own rink here in. A building like that. So this joint venture is more important to our residents and as the numbers state. Over half of the uh usage of the building. By these numbers, and that doesn't actually reflect probably everybody who attains that building, goes through that building, whether it be for a game, sitting in the bleachers. Eight hundred seats that which is a newer addition to that building. I remember when they. Weren't that nice and didn't have the locker rooms underneath it, nor the showers, nor the heaters. It's a little colder then. You probably remember that. So. And to Mayor Betos uh way, a pool is also a lost leader. The only difference is this one's a little colder. So you're not getting that influx. You're not making, it's not a moneymaker. And with the weather that we have in our climatic conditions here in uh. This part of the world nowadays, having an outdoor rink that actually is sustainable for any length of time is very difficult. So having an indoor facility as this, and as I know, the ice pad's been changed a couple of times, the ice plant's been changed probably three times to my recollection. Which I'm reiterating that I said last time, and Zamboni's also been changed with the many upgrades of that building. And again. My fellow councillors know that my first wife actually managed the building for a while. I was part of the building for a long time. And as a long-term member of the Ganon Oakway Skating Club for twenty years, looking after the skating show there. I know exactly what the building can offer us. I know what it still has as a lifespan, and I think that we as a council. Owe it to our residents to maintain this relationship with the town again in Oakway, and I, as my fellow councillor. Do say one A is probably our best bet in this particular regard. Thank you.
Councillor Lackey, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, councillor, maybe if you want to go down history lane, air memory lane, uh, there was uh Lansdowne had their own rink. Um, way back when, uh, there was uh Lansdowne, Ganon Oakway, Clayton, Alexandria Bay. All all played uh together and um Clayton actually was the first one to go with the indoor rink, then Gan. Um, which is kind of how we got here. Uh, anyway, I only have a couple of questions, and and I know you brought your hired gun back there, Shelley. Um, I'm just curious, the non-contributing um rates in the past, how often have they been? Um, how often have they been used? How often have they been charged? Um, the reason I ask this is generally speaking, if if a group or a team generally calls to rent the ice, it's it's typically someone from, someone on the teams from town. Um, so I'm I'm just wondering how you. How you charge that or or how you come about charging that, um and how many times it's it's occurred.
If, thank you, Madam Chair, if I may, through you, if I understand the question, it's how often do we actually charge a non-contributing member fee, either to a team or to a person? I have my director of parks here as well as Shelley, so if you allow me to turn over my shoulder, look over my shoulder, ma'am. Um, so, Shelley's gonna.
Just to add to that, through through chair, um so there's two ways to do it now. So you see on the screen is the non-contributing event hour, and so that is being committed as a result of early uh twenty twenty-three. Uh, so I really contacted Lori, uh, maybe at the arena, she would ask more about the matter. Um, the other thing to look at, and this was heard in other municipalities that I've worked for. Um, you can look at the registered community table. For example, uh minor hockey, um had a hundred uh participants. You can identify uh on that list which ones are from outside the area. And then you recharge a surcharge on that one child who registered. The problem is that surcharge uh can be quite high. And what's happened in other communities that I've worked for is the club didn't want to charge that child that extra rate. So they absorbed it as a whole, which essentially raised that uh registration rate for all of the children, which defeated the purpose of trying to have the non. Uh, non-contributing user pay that higher rate, so it actually didn't work. Um, so what we are using is just the uh price per hour, and that seems to be the most effective.
Thank you, through your worship. Um, and I wonder if we could also.
Thank you, through you, worship. Um, and I wonder if we could also, on your first page, um, it's, uh, appears to be a bylaw, uh, ninety dash one nine. Um, is, is that, um, is there the rest of it? Is it, is it actually, uh, moved and seconded? Um, was it a motion put forward? And are there any other documents that you, as a town, could provide us? Um, that you might have in your archives?
If I may, madam. Uh, the answer is yes. Uh, the document you're looking at, and this is the one that I printed out a hard copy to bring with me and left at my desk when I tried to make my timings here. So my apologies, that's on me. I have it for you. Um, it is a document signed by the mayor of then, uh, Leeds and Lansdowne South and then then mayor of Ganon Aqui, uh, jointly, uh, to come to, in which they both agree to levels of service and funding for a, a list of activities, which at the time was more than just the arena. Um, there was cost sharing, was it for baseball as well? So it was all of the fields were also cost shared and supported. Uh, this is of course pre-amalgamation for T L T I, but it, all of the fields in Ganon Aqui were jointly, uh, supported, uh, by both municipalities. Um, and that will be part of what I will make sure that we get sent to you, uh, tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lackey.
Oh, thank you. I promise I won't be too. We, we were assured at one point, uh, in the past that, um, we would not be, uh, have any costs incurred by the Canada one fifty. Um, and I, I'm just wondering with the asset management, how that breaks down on your side as far as, uh, the use of say, uh, the Zamboni, um, the ice making, uh, itself. Um, how that breaks down as far as how we're actually not paying? Um, how we're not being charged um, on these items that are shared between the two?
Thank you, uh, madam chair, through you as well. Um, so the accounting mech- mechanisms we use, I'm going to turn to Shelley. Okay, my understanding is those costs are broken out so that the contribution from T L T I only supports the uh, operation of the Lou Jeffreys building itself and doesn't support the costs of the Canada one fifty Gord Brown Memorial Rink. However, Shelley, can you speak to that, please? If, through you, madam chair, if she may.
So yeah, so there's exactly right on that. So what we did is we sat down with our treasurer and we outlined every aspect of, um, costs that were related to any sort of signage putting up of the building. So whether it's the compressor, whether it's a percentage of hydro, percentage of insurance, and that we literally went and sat down and figured out what the number of weeks, the number of of clean that this facility and divided them up by percentage and all costs are distributed exactly that way. Um, so, so I can assure council that.
We can make that document available?
It would be in our budget, but yes, we can, we can.
So through you, madam chair, we can also make that, uh, that, that accountancy process, the document that supports it, we can make that available as well. And as we should, if we're going to be transparent.
Great. Thank you. I only have, uh, one more question, and that is, uh, corporate sponsorship. Um, has that been looked at, um, on the town's behalf as far as, um, you know, I'll use, uh, for an example, uh, tournament weekends for various, uh, teams. Whether it be seniors, men's league, uh, minor hockey, you know, have we, have we looked into a corporate sponsor from any of the, I'll say that the businesses who, um, have a greater, uh, return on investment, like are your restaurants, uh, hotels? Um, you know, your places like Canadian Tire, Tim Hortons, has, has there been any, any talk of a corporate sponsor much like Nappany who has Strathcona, uh, Kingston with Invista? Um, I mean, there's other avenues as far as, um, as, uh, you know, uh, money that could be sought.
If I may, madam, uh, through you, uh, councillor Lackey, your point is very well made and it's an issue that we have discussed, uh, between myself and staff, and it's been talked around between council members as well. I'm going to turn to, uh, Jeff Johnson, who's our manager of parks and recs, and then to Shelley. So I'm going to roll, I'm going to roll Shelley under the bus as well again, through you, madam.
So I, I can again assure you, we look for every penny available, so revenue for that. Um, Jeff has been very helpful this fall already. We've had some public skates sponsored by some communities, uh, as an example. Uh, last year, uh, I believe she is on board, that also sponsored a public skate. As you can imagine, people coming in, throwing a tee into a coffee can isn't covering the cost of, of that hour of that skate. So by providing, uh, corporate sponsorship, uh, from businesses within the community to cover those hours are entirely more usage of public skate and, and playing our actual hour rate, uh, for, for that. Um, we'll also know if you've been building, you can then will be, you know, sponsoring that by the morning clock as they out open my mouth. Uh, we've just, uh, I've got a concert in, um, yeah, we learned in Alabama and go.
I'm really sorry I missed it, but anyways, let's go on.
We need to look at the, uh, further stairs going up the features again, reducing life on local colors all the way up to every set of stairs. Um, we, we do have our appetite on the board, we have our open wall. It, it would be, uh, obviously if you want to have two of them for a game, right, to be higher. Uh, so that would be the important, same guy that we got, he said, and then we start finding, you have it, you have a town logo, you have a championship logo. Go to Allen additional, uh, corporate phones, wherever it is, you have to call the caller, what happens, you have a lot to be a company, you should change the name.
If I may, madam chair, just, just to wrap it, um, beginning of this process for us about seeking corporate sponsorship or alternate revenue streams. Um, I'm told we just, um, had a canteen operator approved. Uh, so there'll be, uh, a little bit of an improvement there in the ability to access services, which hopefully we will increase uptake. Um, but we are aggressively interested in, um, finding alternate revenue sources to subsidize the operation. Every dollar we can find is worth having because every dollar we find is, uh, if you find a dollar, it's fifty cents for us, so to speak, under the current arrangement. And if we find a dollar, it's fifty cents for you under the current arrangement. But in both cases, it, it really is a dollar for the people who use the facility. Thank you, madam.
Thank you, worship. I appreciate the information, uh, given tonight, and I'm sure that, uh, we can come to, uh, some sort of common ground in the future. Um, thanks very much.
Councillor Garell?
Uh, just, uh, through you, your worship, and one question, I'm not sure there would be information. Are there any, uh, long-term projections on the, uh, operation and capital costs? Has that been, um, have you had a study done on that, projecting out, say, ten years, what's going on here? Or is it too early for that?
If I may, madam chair, at this point in time, it's too early for that. What we have is, uh, a current needs assessment. Um, uh, our hope, our intent is to set conditions for, um, the ability to deliver the same effect in perpetuity, um, which would mean at some point, uh, in the future, probably major recapitalization, to be blunt, because no building lasts forever, but we're not there now, not even close. Uh, but that would be one of the outputs of the asset management plan would be when will be depreciated at a point where maintenance and repair becomes so expensive that recapitalization is the way to go.
Any further comments or questions from council? Councillor Foddy or Deputy Mayor Foddy, sorry, I'm, I say it every single time, I mean to.
That's okay. Thank you, your worship, through you. I just want to say it, it's my strong belief that if we don't provide for the youth, they'll provide for themselves. It doesn't always have the best outcome. I strongly believe in that. But this isn't just for the youth. Adults use these arenas. You know, and eventually we're going to follow through to a stage in life where we're going to take up Brent Burrows' offer for, and be glad that we supported that as well. So we are one community. You can call us two different townships if you want. We're one community. You know, we advertise the same thousand islands. We, we welcome the same visitors and their money is spent just as well on one side of this border as the other. I think myself with the asset management plan that was drafted for our own use, it becomes crystal clear, you don't want to own anybody else's property because expenses are steep enough on our side. However, I would be more than happy to sit on a committee, which, which I did in the previous, uh, council last year. I volunteered to sit on the joint, the recreation committee. And I'd be more than happy to do that again. There's common ground. It's just a case of finding it. And I had to laugh, Shelley, when you talked about advertisement. I'm getting a little off color here. There's not too many men that haven't stood a year and all read an advertisement. We've all seen it, uh, but it's effective. There's a, there's going to be a certain amount of time spent there. And, uh, depending on who's doing the advertisement and the creativeness, and it, it can be very effective. And, uh, but, uh, I appreciate your presentation and, and the thought provoking you provided here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, no further questions from council? Um, just, is there any questions from the gallery in regards to the presentation? I see no hands up. So we will move forward. Thank you very much for the delegation. We are moving right into administration report. SR dash one six four dash twenty-three Lou Jeffrey Arena options. And the motion is coming forward from councillor, Deputy Mayor Foddy, seconded by councillor, maybe, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve option blank as described in administration report SR dash one six four dash twenty-three. So the motion is now on the floor and up for discussion. Uh, I'll recognize councillor Lackey and then go to councillor Foddy.
Uh, thank you, worship, and through you. Um, I look forward to some debate here tonight. Um, and I appreciate the information that was given. Um, so I'd like to take us in a different direction, and that's, um, the dollars and cents per user, what we subsidize. Um, I'm, I'm here. Um, I mean, they had a presentation which spoke their case to, um, the town and, and, you know, it's their job to represent to their best ability, uh, their ratepayers. Uh, and it's up to us to represent our ratepayers. And that has to have a delicate balance. And unfortunately, dollars and cents is one of those. Um, right now, we're anticipating a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, to me, over the number of unit, users is, if you want to round it, up or down, it's seven hundred dollars per person. Um, plus what the resident pays himself. Plus, in one of our next, uh, reports, is we've given a grant of sixty-five hundred dollars to Ganon Aqui Minor Hockey. To me, broken down in, in per person, um, unfortunately, we have more than just hockey players here in our township. We have soccer players, we have baseball players, we have, you know, any number. We have canoeers, uh, story paddlers, um, we have curlers. And we certainly don't go to that extent to support our residents for those, uh, activities. And I think one of the things, and you better put your timer on, um, I want to look at ice use versus organized ice use because ice use, we can make ice anywhere in the winter. Um, we don't have to, we, we had several opportunities, the Canada one fifty being a great, uh, a, a great thing and the fact that I bet it gets used more than the indoor service. Um, the one we used to have here Lansdowne, uh, certainly did get used by many, 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 uh, town residents. As councillor, uh, Matt, um, had mentioned, it seems to be a lot more fun out here than it is in town. Uh, I'll agree with him there. Um, and I, I think we need to look at other arrangements. We have, uh, Westport, we have Athens, we have agreements with those people as well. And I'm looking at the fairness, um, uh, the, the days of Lansdowne and Ganon Aqui are over. I mean, they're done. In case you haven't noticed, we have Linters, Sealy's Bay, we have Ivy Lee, Rockport, Ascot. Um, those communities also need to be recognized. And, you know, could we use a lot of that money for other activities? We could have indoor sports. Do we, do you know, do we put that money towards a dome where we have, we can put pickleball courts inside? We can put soccer inside twelve months of the year. I mean, there's lots of other opportunities out there for recreation. But we can't do that when we're paying almost a thousand dollars for two hundred and sixty-some residents. And I have a hard time explaining that to some of the people who pay the lion's share of our taxes, which are waterfront, whether it's river, lakes. They pay a great deal of taxes and most of them have no, you know, and the argument can be said about the library, but we know the library has a return on investment that gets used uh, by more than two hundred and sixty-some of our residents. So that's, that's what I'm looking at. I want to give money to our residents to support their recreation. Where they choose to do it is up to them. But for me to say, you know, we're, we're going to give you money to go here. You know, why can't we give them money to go there, which we do, to two other municipalities? So again, I'm, I'm back to the dollars and cents of what we're giving per person. And a hundred and seventy-four thousand, we had a past recreation coordinator that, um, always said, if we had that money, could you imagine the programs that we could, we could do within the municipality, all the municipality? Um, for more than just that many people. So, um, it's nothing against, I don't want to make this the town and the township. I want to make it us and our residents. So that's where I stand for now, until I hear some more information.
Deputy Mayor Foddy, please.
Thank you, your worship. Councillor Lackey, I couldn't disagree with you more. The days are not over between Lansdowne and Ganon Aqui. You could go into any public entity in Ganon Aqui and all willing to bet thirty, forty, fifty percent of the people in there are from Lansdowne.
No, I'm sorry, if I could clarify, I don't mean that. I mean, as a, we're now a township of combined communities. It's not just Lansdowne, Gan. We are a whole municipality.
Okay, the clarity understood. But if we don't show leadership, and that's what we're elected to do here, if we don't show leadership, I don't want to be the one. I won't want to be the one. I'll be voting against that case that, that, uh, you know, terminated this agreement. We have an opportunity here tonight to move forward with monies we've previously agreed upon to at least create a committee amongst the both of us, being the town of Ganon Aqui and our township, to see what we can do here. And I agree with your statement earlier, councillor Lackey, there's all kinds of corporate money here that I think it hasn't even tapped into. People will be willing to put their name there. And we got to get away from the idea this is just hockey. People up there in the wintertime, there's girls figure skating, there's senior skating. It isn't just hockey. Hockey just gets a name that gets wrapped around the, the word hockey rink. Because that's how it's often referred to. Nobody ever says the ice pad in Gan. They refer to it as a hockey arena. Or it's quite affectionately referred to anybody of my age bracket as the Lou Jeffreys. You know, we all knew Lou, knew how passionate he was. It's a good thing he was. A lot of us wouldn't know what sports look like. We had our sports heroes here in the village as well. I had David Aerosmith, the name one. But I don't want to lose an opportunity to move forward, at least for a while, to see where, where we can go with this. Thank you.
I have councillor Jameson and then councillor Calman.
Thank you, your worship. Um, so I want to state my own position, my personal position, not necessarily people I'm hearing from, from way up in the near north there, Sealy's Bay, uh, and Linters, um, I, I think we need to go forward in some way, uh, with the arena in Gan. So that's my stated position. Um, and they'll be stringing me up, up the road later, but I just a few comments. First of all, uh, I understand that, uh, we do not do enough in the rest of the township with respect to these parks and recreation things. We don't have a parks plan. We don't have a rec plan. We all know that. Now perhaps, and we haven't had one for years, perhaps we should try getting there on our own. That's not Ganon Aqui's problem. That's our problem. We should get to it. Um, and I, I know that we're sitting here and we did this same thing last year at this time. We got the contract for a couple of years and we were flapping our hands in the air and, and we came to the compromise that we would renew it for one more year. And we would ask staff, whatever staff would do that, their staff, our staff, to come back with some sort of a plan. So here we are a year later and there's no plan. There's, let's have a plan. Now, now we're going to discuss a plan. Well, that's a year ago. So I have to look at it and I have to say, this is a management problem that the ball was dropped. So we're back making it a political problem. And goodness knows, let's put a bunch of politicians in the room and it won't work, kind of like the way the province is being managed right now by a bunch of politicians. So let's get this off our table and back to staff. Because I think it's worth at least extending this for a year while we figure out what we really need to do, not just in the context of Ganon Aqui's arena, but in the context of what we really need to be doing as a township and those really, and some. In support of, of councillor Lackey's point of view. We need a parks plan. We need to, we need to know what we spend on things here, which is very little. We need to take a look at what we need to do to Jesse Street. This may mean we're going to have to raise the taxes. Rather substantially, are we prepared to sit here tonight and say, hey, maybe we're looking at a ten percent increase next year? Because let's face it, we've got inflationary pressures and everything else. So. There's a lot of moving parts of which this arena is only one. But in fairness to the people that use it and the people that need it and, and our partners in Ganakwe. And we've been partners so long, even, even the deputy mayor was young when that agreement was made. So let's move ahead together with the town, but at the same time. Let's make sure our management is, and their management is looking at this. I have said to all of you or most of you that I worry about some sort of management board. Made up of mostly elected individuals. To me, that's. That would be a recipe for failure. Let's get our management involved. We've got the competence on board here. Let's get them to make a plan that looks down the road. And look at a larger challenge in our own township for recreation. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Calman, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I, when I look at the number of users, I have to break it down to the percentage of the population of our township. That are using that rink and it's less than three percent and even with. You know, family members and everything factored in, it's not even approaching five percent. And when I look at the amount of money we're spending. Now in this partnership and that that is likely to only increase perhaps quite dramatically going forward. And I do consider, and I, I look at this as an asset, not recreation programming. And so if we were to put that money into an asset or assets in our own recreational areas. And we know that there are groups in, in the township that are really crying out for that money to be spent in different ways. I just feel that it could be spent serving a much larger and broader expanse of our township. And I have a deep appreciation for our relationship with Ganakwe, but to me right now as it's being presented. I'm not representing the township as an entirety and I'm certainly not representing my ward, which. I would, I would argue is a much smaller percentage of people from Ward Two that are using that rink. Uh, everyone I know plays in Athens and Westport or Brockville or Kingston if they play hockey or do figure skating. Um, and I just feel. Like with the limited budget that we have for assets to be used for recreational purposes. I just would not be doing due diligence. And also I look at the businesses that benefit from having that rink. You know, everyone that goes there probably goes to Tim Hortons or McDonald's and goes grocery shopping after, and if they're coming for a tournament, those, those. Again, we are a partnered community, but those dollars are not coming to the businesses. In our township, they're going to Ganakwe businesses. So, you know, I would, I would perhaps like to see some more information about. What's going to be required cost wise in, in the building going forward. I would also like to get some idea if possible of what percentages are using rinks in other places. I also, quite frankly, and I'll be full disclosure, I have four sons and we are not a hockey family. Because I couldn't have been a stay at home mom if I had four kids playing hockey, if I had one kid playing hockey. And I have serious issues with where Hockey Canada fees are going right now. And if you watched the fifth estate recently, you, you would too. So. You know, for me, supporting hockey as a recreational program is difficult to do right now on behalf of my constituents. But again, I'm looking at this as an asset, not as a recreational program. And that's where I sit.
Okay, so anybody councillor Lackey?
If there's no one else, I'll.
Uh, I'm gonna, I'll recognize councillor maybe.
Okay. Thank you, meta mayor and through you. Um. Again, at one time, there were a lot more, a lot larger population. Uh, using it mainly because of the factories in our area that have ceased to be mainly in Ganakwe, which again. They had a lot of leagues. So my question is, and to come back to us later is. How much time is the rink not being used that it could have? You know, people in it right now, because in the past, it was going almost twenty four seven, it seemed. There was even some late night games or shinny. So. Is there more potential of more user time? If, if it was deemed possible and um, with more users, um. How, how will that help in our budget? Will it decrease what we need to put into it if there's more users, which is typically a yes answer? Um, because again, you, you get your costs in a different way. So I would assume that's okay. Um, so having more users is, is more important. And um, such was already mentioned, but when it's gone, if it goes. Having something to replace it. And getting the funding and getting something back in place would be almost impossible with our. Economics in this area right now. I still think it's the best paying for our buck to make sure that we have recreation that it does offer. Uh, whether it be the ice pad or in the summertime when they open up, take the ice out and use it for the different activities there, let alone the hall. Which I know used to be used a lot and weddings and. Family gatherings and all kinds of stuff. So I think there's a lot more opportunity maybe there and then the asset management uh, program might be able to. Emphasize that and get that back on track to actually help us as joint communities. Not having to take so much from our tax base to put into the operations of this facility. To make it a continuous operation. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask, you haven't spoke yet, so uh. I, we've been on this topic for quite some time and so I want to keep it. Councillor Ral, you haven't spoke yet, so you can go ahead.
Under an hour.
Yeah, I'm keeping it under. These fine folks have waited for us, um, since we went in our in camera and I realize that some of these parents are probably looking to get home to children, so.
I can state it fairly simply. At the current time, we're looking at about a percent and a half of our overall levy. We don't own arena. Sig- of significant uh, uh stature. Um, I would never want to be responsible for the closure of Lou Jeffries Arena. We sell this community. With the potential of more housing coming in here, which we can't predict anything about, but there's talk of, you know, maybe two hundred homes there. Um, I don't know what the exact usage of that arena is, but my belief would be. That although you might show two hundred and fifty one people on a piece of paper, it affects the family members. One kid talking to his brother, his sister, mom and dad are happy. It's hard to quantify those things and, and uh, Mayor uh, Beddoes was touching on that for sure. So the only way moving forward that we gain any control is with having some working group. Uh, where we can actually ask the questions, which I'm sure are willing to come forward, just. At this time, they haven't. If, if we don't sit on the committee, then we really will end up. Retiring from this. Um, so we have to move forward, at least in the relative short term, I don't know, two, three, four, five years, I don't know. Uh, but we have to sit on some kind of a, a board of people who are financially wise and I reflect back on. On Mayor Burrow, uh, what he was saying about the long tier. Facility that took three years to turn around, but look what they did. They turned it around and we just had a presentation. So who's to say that that can't happen? So in my uh, humble opinion. Um, seeing as we're talking about options, um, unless something comes forward this week that is crushing. I think I would look at option one A as well. It's the only way to move forward about this. Thank you.
Okay, I'll recognize councillor Lackey, please be brief and then councillor Fodey also, please be brief.
Thanks for the opportunity, your worship. Um, yeah, it was touched on, we're about a percent and a half on the taxes, but I do agree, we need uh, some sort of working group to uh. To come to some, some agreement because it's um. You know, for one thing, hockey in general and, and um, councillor, deputy mayor Fodey touched on it, it's more than hockey, it's public skating, it's, it's all of those things. And as I say, I think there's um, there's ways around that uh, as well, but um. I was looking at option three as more of a catalyst um, to provide funds but decreasing, so it puts a prod. To get something, to get some motivation to make this arrangement happen. Um, I don't want to, I don't want to use the term sunset exit, but. It, it shows that, hey, you know what? Somebody's got to come up with something startling soon. If we don't, then the, to make that happen, then it's going to decrease because. Overall, we've seen a decrease in users year after year after year. So. You know, it's, it's going to be less, as far as users, it could be more one year, less the next, whether it's town or township. It, it's irrelevant. It's up and down like a yo-yo. Could be forty five percent this year, fifty two percent next year, sixty percent. Who knows? I coach, I'm not a hypocrite. I coached for nine years in girls hockey. I played all through minor hockey to junior B as well. I've been on the joint committees. And I participate, I've seen their books. I know what's happening. Uh, for the most part, again, what I didn't understand, I asked about tonight. So um, I think there is an opportunity to move forward. I just don't know what that is right now, but I know that. Hundred and seventy four thousand is not, that's um, that's throwing some bad money away, I think.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Fodey.
Thank you, your worship. I will be brief. A thought that I wanted to mention earlier when I was speaking. I'm no fan of, of outside users. Quite frankly, it's discrimination. We just went through a reconciliation day two days ago. If you drop the discrimination of outside users, maybe you'll bring a lot more users in. I, I've never been a fan of outside uh, fees or, uh, uh, it's just, to me, it just doesn't fit. Because those same people will play on the same teams and the same game at the same time. But you're asking them to pay a lot more to be there. I, I, it's, I'm no fan of it.
So um, I'm going to weigh in on this. If you would, don't mind councillor Jameson, if you can. So, time's up, yeah. I, I know, I, I will be brief. Couple of things that were, uh, count, um. Some councillors made some comments and I'd like to clarify. So as far as outside user fees. We're still below the cost of renting ice in Kingston where we do end up. Getting a number of Kingston teams who come down here renting ice and they are paying more still in Kingston than they do here, so. I don't, I don't feel bad about the outside user part. Um, the, to your point councillor Calman, in regards to the businesses who benefit. Um, there's a lady sitting down at the end whose children work at No, No Frills. And work hard and they get paid based on the patronage of people stopping, going, getting their groceries after they've come. And I know there's some kids who work at Tim Hortons and, and Shoppers Drug Mart and. Um, McDonald's and they are from the township as much as they are from the town. So. So the businesses, while they may not be owned or paying taxes within our municipality, they are supporting this municipality, the children, the families. Um, to me, the, the rink speaks more about community and building community and I know that. Uh, the price tag is high, the cost is high. However, um, knowing what I know about what team. Builds with children's youth sports, whether it be soccer, hockey, baseball. It really comes down to the volunteers, the people that have showed up here tonight. To lend their support to the delegation, the people who have applied for grant money, so to uh, councillor Lackey's point about the costs. The grant that's coming forward for Gan Minor Hockey, that's coming out, not coming out of the levy, that's coming out of the casino funds. So that's not out of the taxable levy. Um. It's the grandparents, the aunts, the uncles, the friends that pop by and come to watch their godchildren play or, or they come for a. Tournament and they end up staying for the weekend. That all supports the community and, and gives a reason uh, to stay here and to your point councillor. If we are as fortunate to have the ability to approve a two hundred and fifty home subdivision here in Lansdowne. We are in the catchment area for OMHA, so one of the things that some of the councillors may or may not be aware of, part of the reason some kids don't play in Ganakwe. It's because they're mandated to play in other jurisdictions because of dividing lines. I believe Darling Side is one, the Woodvale Road up at. Um, Charleston Lake is another, so. Part of the reason that some of the kids don't play in our jurisdiction is because Ontario Minor Hockey tell them, they have to go to other jurisdictions to play uh, rep. Believe, not House Lake, but anyways, we're getting down into the weeds. However, to, to my point. Um, as a parent who've had kids play both in Gan and Kingston. Um, spent lots of time on the road. Um, there's, there's something to be said for the volunteers and the people who make this type of stuff happen and. Right now, we don't have anybody coming forward saying we want to put a baseball league together here in this municipality that I'm aware of. Um, we don't have anybody who's come forward and said we want to put a soccer league together here in this municipality. These people are running a league, um, both that is serving the town and the township. So. I will leave it at that. Based on the conversation that has been had, my understanding is. That one A is somewhat the desired and to your point councillor Jameson, I'm going to clarify.
I just want to make a pitch for option one with an amendment.
Okay.
Um, and I'm, you know, there's all the emotion and all the history and all the stuff, but at the end of the day, it's a building. That we're putting money into, not a program. So let's, let's get over that notion. In my opinion, I think we should move forward. I don't think we should drop the relationship. I think we need to work it forward a little better than we have been. And a lot of other things that were abandoned a few years before we got here, we need to get back on track. This is a building that requires our attention within the two municipalities. I think we need to move forward. But I think going with the status quo. Uh, it, option is, I don't like the word status quo. I think we should go ahead with one year. And direct the managements to bring us a plan like we did a year ago and we didn't get it. Now, I know there was election and there were our different faces mostly or in other places. Um, and you know, that's, that reminds council that we're temporary help. And we look at our staff as the, the continuity to get us places. So I would like to see. Let's go with the status quo, we'll, we'll use that word uh, for one year. And have a staff report in the next few months. In order for us to be able to make decisions going forward. And not, I do not believe that a management board with a bunch of councillors on it is the route to go. Because I think we'll be back here talking about ice time again. And that has nothing to do with what's going on here. It's an asset. Let's get to the asset and let management, who understands asset management, do that for us. So that's my suggestion. Status quo and amended to direct staff to move ahead with a plan. Thank you.
So you're putting forward an amendment to the motion to approve option one. Um, with management to come forward with a five year plan? I, I, I'm, I put that, that number out there because I, the, they need to know what parameters they're working.
Oh, it's, it's not a Soviet plan, but five years would be fine.
So the amendment coming forward from councillor Jameson. Uh, anybody uh, to direct management to come forward with a five year plan on top of option one?
Excuse me, if I might, option one A. Um, it's just referring really to a group. It doesn't specifically say it's councillors, it just says a group. Cannot that be the staff group that councillor Jameson would be referring to? Could it not be a group of smart people, smarter than us around this table? To get together and pu- put that plan together. That was what I was thinking. I wasn't thinking of us sitting on this board.
Okay, I, you're, you, you know, your worship, I, 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 I take your point, uh, councillor Gurrell, it's a good point. I just, I am just concerned that it starts to become the political football that politicians kick around. I want management involved in this. I want management to lead and like our, say our waste management working group, which is a little different. Um, we get together to work with staff and they move forward. As opposed to putting politicians in charge and directing staff. The working group allows us to talk to management in a way that allows them to do things. And bring recommendations forward. So that's, I don't know if I'm making any sense, but I'd just like to make sure that management is. I'd just like to make sure that management is pushing this along on our behalf rather than us pushing management.
So I recognize you.
Uh, thank you, worship, and through you, um. When I came to council previously proposing the Board of Management and seeking a direction for us to proceed to. Uh, negotiate a terms of reference for, we'll call it a board of management, it could be a working group, whatever you want to call it. It would be some sort of body that would have joint representation between the township and the town. In my mind, I had it working like our physicians recruitment working group. Where we did have representation from council and, but it was very much a, a staff-driven kind of. Kept the ball moving. So, so that's where I was going with it. I didn't have the opportunity to flesh this out with my opposite number, Shelley Fornia at the, the town. Because we sort of got sidetracked onto this conversation. So that's, that's where my thinking, I was in line with what you're thinking.
So essentially, I had read the, the one A option being that. Sorry, I've got it up here. Uh, maintained by a group of representatives from the township Van Gannon Oakway, it wasn't necessarily specifically from council, so. If you are, it's on record here tonight that if we were to move forward with one A, that it would be expected that. Either township staff and any members of council who wanted to weigh in, it's fine, but staff would be responsible for bringing back the plan. Okay, so based on what we've talked about, I'm going to put in option one A as described in administration report SR dash one six four dash twenty-three. Counselor Jameson, we never got a second or three amendments, so it never happened. So the motion stands that the, uh, from Deputy Mayor Fode, councillor maybe, that Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve one A as described. In administration report SR dash one six four dash twenty-three. So all those in favor of the motion, please in indicate. All those opposed. So, motion is carried. Thank you very mu- uh, very much. Thank you to those. Oh, we have a question from the gallery, I'll recognize. I, can you come over and use the microphone? Whoever's watching on, on there can't hear, so all of Shelley Fornia's, you know, that was just. Sorry, go ahead. I would think it would be incumbent upon the group to establish, establish themselves first and foremost, but then when you're talking about establishing rates and fees, that that's. When they would have the, the user groups in to, for consultation at that point, not to receive a late in the game change. Which is what we want to avoid, which is what happened this year, right? And it could be a working, like a brainstorming session that they're involved in at that point in time. I think that's perfectly reasonable, and the mayor from Gannon Oakway is nodding, so. Okay, perfect. Are there any other questions from any of the user groups who happen to be represented here tonight? Okay. Do we need a break, folks? Yes, okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Thank you, everyone. Their, your patience, uh, those two delegations and, and the further discuss, subsequent discussion are very important, so. Now we have forty minutes gets reserved to the, of the agenda, so my hope is that we can do so. Okay, so administration report SR dash one five three dash twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, council and committee meeting schedule. That the Committee of the Whole recognizes that council approved the twenty twenty-four Township of Leeds, Thousand Islands. Council and committee meeting schedule, administration report SR dash one five three dash twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. And the motion comes forward from Counselor Jameson and Counselor Maybe, seconded by Counselor Maybe. So, go ahead, Counselor Gurrell.
Through you and I guess to the clerk. In January, uh, would there not be a Committee of the Whole Tuesday, January second? After a stat holiday?
I think we moved it.
Uh, through your worship, thank you for your question, Counselor Gurrell. That could be an option, um, if council.
So it's not a misprint here. That's the way it, you were thinking of drawing it up, is that there's no Committee of the Whole? We jump right to a, a.
To the eighth.
Um, is that, I'm sorry, is the eighth the Committee of the Whole, or is it?
Yes, so um, January eighth is Committee of the Whole and January fifteenth is council. I, um, if I may, I would just like to clarify. Oh, no, no, um, January fifteenth and June seventeenth include both the library board and committee of the whole meetings. That's why there's a change of color. Without those dates.
They're melded.
Okay, that's, I missed that point. That's, thank you.
Um, so, uh, yes, go ahead, Counselor Kelman.
Thank you, worship, and for you, I just was wondering, March eleventh. Is marked for a council meeting, that is March break. And it does not affect me because I don't do anything on March break, but I was wondering for our, some of our staff members that have school-aged children. That perhaps we could change that date so that it doesn't fall, because I believe it's March break in Limestone as well. So I was wondering if we could change that date so that it doesn't fall within March break.
How thoughtful. I'm also going to put forward a change. In January to put the council meeting on the fifteenth of January to the sixteenth, which would be a Tuesday. If it's amenable to council members at this far in advance. I, I have a conflict that I'm aware of already. So, um, I'd like to push it to the Tuesday night if council would be supplying. Things that I'm missing next week. Okay, so are there any other dates that are jumping out at anybody? We can always amend the schedule if necessary at a later date. This just gives something for the staff to work towards, but um, won't be obviously ratified until council next week. So it would come forward with the two suggestions based on the discussion. Okay, so I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion at hand, all those opposed, and it's carried. Okay, next motion is by Deputy Mayor Fode, seconded by Counselor Jameson, that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approves the community grants. Fall intake distribution in the amount twenty-two thousand five hundred. Uh, motions on the floor, any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Counselor.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I was just wondering, uh, Gannon Oakway Skating Club, uh, was, was a lot less than some of the others. In retrospect, so just wondering if there's a rationale for that, or, you know.
We'd like to speak to that.
Nobody's here, no?
Um, through your, your worship, if I may, I, I was part of the um, intake committee. Um, and the treasurer can also speak to this as well if you would like, um, so. We, the budget request is less than asked to accommodate the number of requests received. So I believe in their application, they did state the percentage of the residents who were part of the skating club. In T L T I, and then we made the rationale based on that as well.
Just, just clarification, because some others got a larger proportion too, so it's all good, I've just had to question, thanks.
Okay, so any further questions in regards to the fall grant intake? And allocations? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, all those opposed, and it's carried. Okay, uh, six point four, I'll ask Counselor Lackey and Deputy Mayor Fode to vacate the premises. And then we will have a discussion in regards to that motion. And the motion is moved by Counselor Kelman and seconded by Counselor Gurrell. And the motion reads that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council directs staff to continue the existing approach of enforcement by of existing bylaws through administrative monetary penalties. To address complaints regarding short-term rentals, and that there, if there is a material increase in the number of complaints regarding short-term rentals. Staff bring forward a report to council with further recommendations for enforcement. So the motion is on the floor. Remaining councillors? Go ahead, Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I wrote down three complaints, same property, and I put a question mark, but I'm now trying to find it here. Whether that is indeed what's happened here, because, well, oh yes, okay. Came back to me that last year when we were discussing all this budgetary stuff, that we've only had three, three properties that really have come to, to light. To be an issue, um, so, and we decided at the time that monetary value would be increased as it has been by the. By the record there, so do you feel that, that monetary? Change is going to be enough to deter some of these? Complaints that we have had since we only had three properties in question, to my knowledge.
Go ahead, Madam. Through you, um, at this point. The monetary changes don't necess- that we're asking for in a subsequent report. Actually, most of the complaints that we've received that those ones would apply to from a noise perspective. Aren't necessarily related to short-term rentals. Uh, with respect to the one particular property that's noted in this report, where we have received multiple complaints on the same property. Those, there were charges issued, um, we've not received any appeals or anything with respect to those charges. Uh, because of the nature of the complaints that were received in being a property. We di- we didn't have front-end municipal law enforcement attend that. It was resident concerns that were brought forward with enough information to support our proceeding with charges. So we didn't incur the additional costs related to using outside contracted services to enforce in this case, so. With respect to the proposed increases that are in a different report, I think that they are substantive enough to deal with our costs associated with that. And in this case, one of the things that I would point out, because there's been another property that we've encountered since writing this report. Um, some of them are brought forward to our attention, just listings, and so. Um, while I note too, in this report, there's a third property that is a short-term rental. Um, that hasn't been brought forward to our attention through resident concerns or anything, but it's been brought forward through. Building compliance issues, and so we're pursuing prosecution on another property. The fact that it's used as a short-term rental has nothing to do with the concerns that we're pursuing on, so. I, I think at this point that we're covered in terms of our approach, and should we determine, because there's a. Significant increase in the number of complaints or a different type of complaint we're receiving, then we would certainly come back to council with a different recommendation if we feel we need to. Okay. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, we will call the question. All those in favor, all those opposed, and the motion is carried, so we'll ask. Deputy Mayor Fode and Counselor Lackey to come back in. Okay, thank you for joining us, gentlemen. Moved by Counselor Lackey, seconded by Counselor Kelman, that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approves the proposed. Parking bylaw attached to planning report SR dash one six three dash twenty-three as exhibit A. Now, the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the recommended amendments to the property standards by law two thousand twenty-two dash zero four six. Safe properties by law two thousand twenty-two dash forty-seven, canine control by law two thousand twenty-two. Dash forty-eight and noise by law two thousand twenty-two dash forty-nine to establish provisions for tiered fines for repeat offenses. Attached to report number SR dash one six three dash twenty-three as exhibits B, C, D, and E. And that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the associated amendments to the administrative monetary penalty by law. Twenty-two dash zero four four to establish tiered fines and add fines for the enforcement of parking by law attached to report. SR dash one six three dash twenty-two as exhibit F. Motion's on the floor, folks, discussion. Um, I'll have the planner make some comments. Thank you, um, just to point out that I distributed a bylaw to councillor, to council earlier. Um, attached to the report are all of the track changes versions, however, we did identify. Through review subsequent to the report being posted, that there were a couple of sections from the. Safe properties by law. That needed to be added to the, um. To the schedule, so um, we've added those and those are highlighted on the report that's been distributed to council. Uh, with a blue flag just showing the areas that have been. uh, with a blue flag just showing the areas that have been added since the report was distributed. Uh, it's two fines, one for failing to keep a property free of wrecked, discarded, and inoperative vehicles or machinery. And the second one is fail to store building materials, lumber, or any other material safe from fire or risk of accident. So those have just been added to the schedule in the bylaw to ensure that we have the fees that are consistent with the provisions of the safe properties bylaw. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Counselor Jameson.
In, in the course of reviewing this, it, it's clear that county roads are not included in this proposal because they can't be, so, um, that's too bad, because, um, you know, just the two roads that we deal with up, uh, in, in the north there. Linters Road through the village of Linters and Main Street through Sealy's Bay is where I know over the last four years, seen most of the complaints having to do with vehicles and so on and so forth. So, um, I think maybe if, if, if it makes sense because of the way that the county operates or not, uh, perhaps a notice of motion uh, to direct the county or to, to, um, advise the county that we are looking for them to, to be in the, um, parking enforcement business, because we can't be, so at this stage anyway. So is that something we can bring as a notice of motion and that would that be helpful to the discussion?
I think number nine on the agenda is notices of motion, and I think that could be very helpful. Any other comments or questions in regards to this? Go ahead.
I just, I just to thank the planning director for, for all of this, um, appreciate that effort, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Gray.
Thank you, and through, uh, your worship, I guess, to, uh, infrastructure. When I looked at the list of the no parking areas that you'd provided, I guess, from previous council in two thousand eight, it's a significant number that would strike me as a lot of signage. Uh, I know from previous experience that that's a lot of money. Uh, how much money are we looking at? To, to, to just get the signs and what kind of timeframe? And is it necessary that those signs be in place before our, um, uh, bylaw officer can issue lines? Thank you.
Thank you through your worship. Um, I believe in order for the bylaw to be enforceable, there have to be signs in place. I'm looking at Director Planning when I say that.
Through you, it depends what the infraction is, because there are sections in the bylaw that identify areas where parking can be enforced for general road and safety traffic issues, but yes, for some of the road segments, definitely, they need to be in place to be enforceable.
Okay, with that being said, uh, we have already placed an order anticipating that this was coming down the pipeline. Um, for two hundred signs, posts, everything, all of the hardware, and the bill for that was seventeen thousand dollars.
Is that in the budget, two thousand twenty-three?
We, we did have some, some way within our operating budget that we could cover that cost.
Thanks, thanks very much.
So question, question. Um, your worship, uh, hearing this two hundred sign purchase, which is very exciting. I assume this is a targeted placement, uh, that we know there are areas that are needing to be targeted as opposed to sort of a general no parking. Um, I mean, I, I'm, I'm sure that's the answer to the question, but I'd like to know if there's a strategy as to where you're going to place them.
Thank you through your worship. Um, the areas where I identified from the previous bylaw, um, most of the areas did seem to make sense. We focused on the hamlets as well, where we do have some parking challenges. Um, cul-de-sacs where our, our equipment needs to be able to turn around properly. And, uh, you know, to sign that appropriately, we, we had to, uh, we had to buy what we, the materials that we did.
Okay. Counselor Gray.
Just, uh, uh, through you, your worship, so that was done in two thousand eight. What, would it just come back to council to get a, a minor, a change in that, like an addition or a subtraction? Would that have to come before council? On that list, uh, like, is the list definitive? I guess that's what I'm saying.
Uh, yes, the list is definitive.
And, and it would have to come back quickly before council, one way or the other.
If we were adding or subtracting, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because in order to enforce, we have to be very clear about the specifics, specific sites. Okay, uh, Counselor May, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you, so, uh, when the fines are actually issued, who's getting the money?
Us.
If it, if it's contested and goes to court, who gets the money?
Go ahead. Um, through you, this has been set up to be part of our administrative monetary penalty bylaw, so this is administered by the municipality. Um, so when a fine is issued, there is an appeal mechanism. If someone appeals, the first step is a screening officer, which was appointed by council when the AMP bylaw was approved, so I function as the screening officer. Uh, should there be a further appeal to a screening officer's decision, then it goes to the hearing officer. So currently Cunningham Swan is our hearing officer. Um, the one difference with the parking bylaw rather than the other bylaws is that if somebody does not pay their fee, it gets registered against their plate and is recouped through that, so the money comes directly to the municipality rather than provincial offenses court.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Going to call a question on this one. All those in favor, all those opposed, carried. Thank you very much, Madam Planner. I know that was a lot of work to get that down to that detail. Next item on the agenda is six point six, planning report SR dash one six seven dash twenty-three, moved by Counselor Kelman, seconded by Counselor Lackey, that the committee of the whole recommends that council support the request to refund the minor variance application fee for application D thirteen dash twenty twenty-three dash zero one two, Ray Rombo. And that the committee of the whole recommends that council direct staff to bring forward amendments to the zoning bylaw to permit limited encroachments for accessibility structures necessary for approach or entrance to a structure. Motion's on the floor, up for discussion. Go ahead, Counselor Kelman.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, not specifically to this motion, I just think that this raises something that we should be considering perhaps in budget discussions. And that is whether we should be charging all of the fees for accessibility structures, like, for example, ramps and that kind of thing. I know we talked about it during, um, a set meeting, a community improvement plan meeting, and I think it is something we should consider going forward.
That can be discussed through the budgeting, that's what I, okay, thank you. But thank you for bringing it up. Any other comments or questions in regards to this request? I'm going to call, oh, go ahead, Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Fody.
Thank you, worship through you, uh, just for clarity, I, that's, it's okay. I'm not reaching for Kleenex, I'm good. Just for clarity, the CRCA review fee of four hundred fifty dollars, they have to accept that, should we pass this, as I know it works?
Madam Planner? Through you, the recommendation is not to refund CRCA fees, we have absolutely no jurisdiction over them. So the recommendation is just that it be the minor variance application fee that's refunded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No, they're hands up, I'm calling the question. All those in favor? All those opposed, and it's carried. Okay, unfinished business, any unfinished business? Um, I have an update for you. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, I don't know if I need to know some more than later, but uh, unfinished business as with regards to some reports we've had in the past about our speed limits on the St. Orange River. Um, we never really got um, any conclusion to that saga.
Uh, there was never any conclusion that I am aware of.
No, and there should have been, perhaps.
I think that in the midst of changeover of directors and things, that it probably was shuffled.
Could we resurrect that?
Go ahead, sorry.
Through you, your worship. I can remember that quite well. And, uh, we put together a letter, or through resolution, to talk to Mark Carno, the Ministry of uh, Transport Minister, and of course, it's the federal government, and nothing, I imagine, was received back because we were simply asking him to extend a hundred feet to a couple hundred feet for ten kilometers an hour. Um, with respect to the speed limits, um, the homework that I did was pretty definitive, that, and it was stated then with our, at the time, um, uh, uh, infrastructure manager, that you have to start from zero. In other words, when a com, a community wishes to change something, those speed limits on the river, you have to start right at the very beginning. You can't just say that, uh, it used to exist, now we want to change it. So the process would be extremely onerous. And that's why it probably just was let go. Uh, I could find the documents, they're there, that say, hey, from the federal government, here's the steps that a municipality must take. And there's no, if puts or hands, that's it, and it's public consultation, it's providing reasons, it's, it would be uh, challenging, and it would be additional to staff, so with all due respect, um, we can look at it again, but I think it would be a real burden on staff, and I'm not sure of the outcome. There you go.
Go ahead, Counselor Lackey.
I think the fact of the matter is, is that the speed limits exist, that the township had taken them over from federal jurisdiction, and they are no longer out there, um, in the areas that they're supposed to be. So whether we want to try and revert that back to, uh, the ministry, but as of right now, we are responsible for those speed limits. We're the ones that indicated we wanted them. Uh, previous council has gone through the process, uh, many years ago. Uh, they are on record, um, I can quote the location of them. Um, and where they are, they exist with GPS coordinates as to where they are and what the speed limit is. Um, uh, the one specific would be between Wallace and Ash. Um, no longer exists, but we are responsible as of right now.
I wouldn't, uh, suggest that is, I wouldn't argue the point, but I would say that if you read the regulations under V O R R, Vessel Operations Restrictive Regulations, uh, in the late schedules in that, they detail every Canadian waterway and every channel that has a speed limit. In order to enforce, which would be quite a number of enforcement officers can do that, but you need to have the proper signage, not just signage, it has to be signage that meets the standard of the Ministry of Nat, uh, pardon me, the Transport Canada. Those signs do not exist, you cannot just put up a sign privately. Um, all of that is covered very, in great detail, so without signage, it's like the only regulation in my mind that sits, uh, sits there, like, you know, uh, highways are eighty kilometers an hour, right? The only thing that sits there is a hundred feet from shore, unless you're towing a, a water skier, you have to be, uh, under ten kilometers an hour within a hundred feet of shore. All of the others, quite correctly, they're, they exist, but and they's, and another one that would exist would be ten kilometers an hour in the Rideau, uh, canal. That is clearly listed in the schedules, uh, but in terms of enforcement, uh, I think, uh, former Constable Denny Robert, I got Dennis's name correct, Dennis Roberts? So Dennis brought forward the report, if you recall, and he said, uh, here's the existing. And it's, there's everything from forty kilometers an hour out there to eighteen to ten, it's all over the map as you come through the waterways from, um, from, uh, Grenadier Island. All of the channels, Dennis had the report, and he's quite right in it. And he detailed it, it shifts from this to this, to this, this, a boater, it would be impossible for a boater to understand those, uh, the, uh, speed limits through there. The OP cannot, and I think his point was, they can't regulate, or pardon me, they can't enforce without signage. It, it got very kind of messy very quickly, and, uh, my recollection is, uh, it was going to be quite challenging, and remember, it was about high water, and it was about wave action, and it was about calming people down for wake. Uh, we also determined that the speed of a boat does not necessarily determine its wake. That, uh, big boats going fast can put out little wake. Small boats going slow can put out a huge wake, you know, so it's, it, the relationship is, uh, challenging. Anybody who's boated would understand that, and it's particularly challenging on the St. Lawrence River with the size of some of the equipment. Roundabout, I would, if you want to go that route, I would go back and refer to the regulation, uh, which is pretty available, uh, V O R R, and it's all there in the marine section of Transport Canada. Thanks.
So I would just say, Counselor Lackey, if you wanted to revive that or have any further discussions, I would encourage you to speak to the Director of Operations.
Yeah, I actually forwarded him an email, which is Canada, uh, Government of Canada Justice Law's website.
Okay.
Which actually lists every sign in our municipality on the river, which is law. So I'm just wondering what we're going to do, whether we, I would like to divest in that, e- everything Counselor Grelle said is absolutely correct. I mean, it should go back to the hundred, uh, what is, a hundred feet from shore. Typically is, would cover all of this, but the fact remains that we took, the township took responsibility many years ago. So what do we do with that responsibility now?
I just want to say, the one that you don't need signage for is a hundred feet from shore.
Yeah.
Is ten kilometers. You do not need a sign on that. That's, that's a, another regulation built into that regulation.
So I think that there's some discussion to be had, and, and if, if anything needs to be done, then it can come back and be revived at the staff level. Okay. Any other unfinished business? Unfinished business? So I have unfinished business, Highway thirty-two. Uh, I was speaking with county in regards to, um, Highway thirty-two. They are in current negotiations with, um, CN Rail in regards to a settlement. Nothing has been decided at this time, but I know that the first offer from CN was made, and they're still going back and forth. Good news is, is that they do feel like they will have an answer here before the end of the year. Any work would be done as of twenty twenty-four. Um, also, I found out, you know, and I'll have to eat my shirt if they don't go through with this, because I haven't seen the budget document yet, but they've committed to redoing, rebuilding South Lake Road. So County Road thirteen, I believe. So if anybody's had the pleasure or displeasure of driving down County Road thirteen at this point in time, your car will thank you, because it's basically dust, so. Anyways, so that's what I have, I could go on for a long period of time about county, but we don't have that kind of time tonight. Uh, any other unfinished business? Go ahead.
Uh, this is on, in other business, and just a quick one, uh, I'd like to go back to Cheeseborough Road. Um, and, um, having used that road many times, and as I reiterated, when we were talking about the cul-de-sac for Cheeseborough, is that, uh, entering the highway off Cheeseborough Road, which used to be Old Thirty-two Highway, which was under the MTO, uh, jurisdiction. And I'm sure their engineers put that, uh, exiting road along railway to give clear, um, uh, direction from, uh, from oncoming traffic. I have stopped at that road since it last, and I cannot see a car coming from the going northbound within, and if the car or vehicle, and if you're sitting in a car at that stop sign, you cannot see the apex of the hill. And a vehicle traveling at a hundred Ks would be on you and into you before you ever were able to hit the brake or accelerate to get out of their way. So I, I want to revisit that decision or the potential decision of closing said road, and, uh, for the cul-de-sac to be a turnaround, for the plows to come back out that way. Uh, yes, it may save us, uh, some time, it may save that, but we're going to lose a life. I will stake mine on it, no question. I have come out that road, and I have come close myself. I, I, I've lived it, so. I that's it for me on that one.
Any other business? Go ahead, Counselor Gray.
Uh, through your worship, uh, at, uh, the Cataract Way Conservation Authority is, uh, currently running a, um, a survey for their strategic plan for the entire community. Um, and it, I would ask that the township post on our website, uh, perhaps their website, uh, linking that up, because it only goes to October ninth. And, um, they really are anxious to get, uh, both township, municipal, and public input into it. Um, and again, strategic plan moving through two thousand twenty-seven. Yeah. Uh, other issues that came up, uh, recently at the previous meeting are the, uh, transition plan, quarterly reporting, has a lot to do with how they're going for. previous meeting or the uh, transition plan quarterly reporting has a lot to do with how they're going forward with Bill seat twenty-three. What it has to do with um, their life. Um, of concern to me personally, sitting on the uh, on the full authority board now, there's lots in their budget that uh, is, seems minor in nature, but we pay for it. And I know under, I read the regulations on how that's apportioned. Uh, and there's supposed to be a full accounting for it. Now, one could argue, we're going to be paying them this year about a hundred and seventy plus, I think seventy-six thousand dollars for the floodplain mapping of the St. Lawrence River. So we're up around a quarter, quarter million dollars. Two hundred and fifty, two hundred and forty-eight, something like that. And uh, in terms of our share of the levy, not the special levy, but the levies, it just seems, it just builds upon itself. And uh, I would ask that the um, I will ask, I guess, or this township should ask uh, precisely the uh, means by which that was gotten. Because if it's just increasing a percent each time, then whatever started the process is just being added on. And I'm, I'm not saying one way or the other, but it would be incumbent upon them to, to um, give us a report. The CRCA should get that report. I'm not a, a forensic scientist or whatever, but I think that would be useful. It's only a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but that represents a percent and a half of our municipal budget. A levy, of our municipal levy. Right? So that's there. They are a group that is uh, you know, dedicated to their lands and so on and so on. And that's actually that transition plan that they have to report. They did as of, I guess, uh, Sunday. Thank you.
Any other, other business? Notices of motion. Mark, go ahead.
Um, thank you, your worship. Um, I'll submit to the clerk um, a motion that will in, in effectively uh, ask the county or advise the county that they should develop a parking enforcement plan for county-owned and managed roads as soon as possible. And so I'll submit something and, and the clerk can clean it up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So any other notices of motion? Seeing none, I'll blow through my mayor's update and get us out of here by nine thirty. So it's Local Government Week from October fifteenth to the twenty-first, so that will be after next week. Every year Ontario celebrates Local Government Week to increase public and youth awareness of local governments' important roles in our communities. Also, please make note, uh, this is Agricultural Week, uh, October second to the eighth. Um, obviously agriculture is a large part of our local economy and are the community fabric. So if you ate today, thank farmer. T L T I is one of the winners of the two thousand twenty-two fa- financial information return recognition award. Wow. On behalf of council, we appreciate the efforts and contribution to of our staff in ensuring timely, reliable and accurate financial information that was submitted for the Township's two thousand twenty-two FIR. That would be kudos to our former treasurer, Kate. Um, so we'll have to send her a thank you, thank you note. Um, we'll, we'll send her a thank you note or bouquet of flowers or something. Um, Rockport Customs Dock Park donor wall unveiling will be held on October seventh at eleven AM. Some members of council and staff will be in attendance. Uh, so if you have no plans that day, please come out and join us. T L T I Private Road Grant, the Maintenance Stream Application Period is now open. So if you live on a private lane, pro- private road, um, there is an application process. You will find it on our website. Uh, to we encourage roads associations to apply if they need assistance with regular maintenance costs such as snow removal, grading, brushing, or dust control. Applications are due October thirty-first. Um, also, just to report that I attended the Leeds-Gremble Housing Summit, which was in North Gremble last Friday. Uh, there was a number, uh, the um Minister of Housing for Ontario, uh, Minister Calandra was there along with our local M P P and our M P in attendance, talking about the importance of getting uh, housing starts moved up. There were other um, organizations there that had gone through putting multi-unit buildings up uh, in the region, namely Smith Falls, and they talked about a number of different ways to move that along the process. Um, I'm happy to report that the suggestions that the speaker was making, talking about conditional building improvements is something a tool that we do use. She was talking about how it doesn't get used as a tool to move things forward after the main things are agreed upon. But um, really it comes down to the fact that we, we can't build enough housing fast enough. And just trying to find ways to collaborate with local um, not-for-profit groups. Um, the Margarita Residence that some of you may or may not be aware of, Wall Street Village in Brockville, highly, highly, highly successful not-for-profit uh, housing group. Um, when it came down to the St. Vincent Paul build that's happening right now, it, it literally came down to the fact that they couldn't get financing and they owned three buildings pretty much unencumbered. Um, more importantly, uh, the city of Brockville had to guarantee a loan. So I, I don't say that to scare the rest of council, but to keep in mind that there is some creative stuff going on because banks are not coming to the, to the table. And Infrastructure Ontario is willing to look at these things, but depending on how quickly you need things, sometimes it can't be done that way either. So um, just keep that in the back of your head. So on behalf of council and myself, I'd like to wish everybody a very happy, wonderful Thanksgiving. It's my favorite holiday of the year where we can give thanks for family, friends and our community. Um, and I will send my regrets now. I will not be in attendance to next week's ca- council meeting as I will be traveling. If I happen to log on, ignore me. Anyways. So what is, did I miss any events, major events that had happened over the last week? Oh, the fiftieth anniversary tea for the Ladies Auxiliary in Sealy's Bay on Sunday. Had a lovely group of folks celebrating fifty years of women supporting their community and supporting the Legion. Lots of great records. The record keeping was quite amazing, uh, as well as the photo photographs. Um, so it was a lovely afternoon. With that, I'm going to put the motion for adjournment on the table. Moved by Counselor Gray, seconded by Counselor Kelman, that the Committee of the Whole adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? And we're carried. Thank you, everybody.